Okay, we are live. Alrighty then. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order tonight a special called meeting between the City of Oxford Board of Commissioners and those members of our Planning Board that could be present. We are so excited to have tonight's meeting going on. We have with us Chad Sarri, who is of Stewart Stronger by Design here, and he's going to be talking to us about a planning and land use. We're here to have a discussion about planning and land use that has been triggered by the prospect of what appears to be exponential growth in Oxford, and we want to make sure that we are doing everything we can to get this right. So, I think tonight is an exciting evening, and I would like to invite the Planning Board members that are here tonight to stand up and introduce yourselves, and I see Larry Thomas over there, so I'm going to ask to start with you.
Obviously, I'm Larry Thomas.
Linda Edwards.
Juanita Rogers.
Mike Summers.
Michael Kinlow.
Kinlow, Michael Kinlow, okay, wonderful. And Luann Gilligan, thank you so much for coming. We are delighted to have you here with us tonight. And with that, I think I'm going to turn it over to Chad, and thank you for coming to the City of Oxford. We know we're going to learn a lot tonight, so thank you so much for being here.
Sure, thank you so much. I'm going to take my mask off some hot mug while I talk to y'all, and I'm going to try to walk around so that everybody can kind of hear my voice and kind of go through. I have a lot of information to go through tonight. I want to reiterate-
I'm sorry, name is Chad?
Chad Sarri.
Sarri?
Sarri.
Thanks, Bill.
S-A-R-Y. And I want to reiterate what the mayor said. It is very important for the Planning Board and the elected body to get together and make sure you're all on the same page. So, that's really good stuff in the right direction at the community. I'll go ahead and tell you, I'm not a professional speaker. I'm not a lecturer, I'm not a professor, or anything like that. I've just been very blessed to have a lot of experiences, and I'm going to talk through some of those things so y'all can learn about me tonight and some of the experiences that I've had. So, as we go through tonight, I am a planner, so I do like to give an agenda and let y'all know what we're going to talk about tonight. So, we'll do some introductions, but we're going to talk about growth and some of the things that I've experienced and seen in other communities, some market and housing trends, some information on why we plan. Why do we have a planning board? Why do we plan as a community? A little bit of history, so that you understand that, some legislation that you've probably heard about recently, some tools to make decisions, some conflicts of interest, some things that you might be dealing with or you might deal with into the future, and then some decisions tonight. So, we've kind of got a big discussion about planning in general today, and y'all are on the cusp of starting to have a lot of growth. And I've talked to your manager and her, you know, where you're going, and once I tell you about my background, I'll tell you about my experiences on what I've seen with growth. And before I get started, happy day after election with everybody, too. So, I know there's- When we set this date up, I was like, man, that's the day after election, so hopefully everybody's really happy in the ring. And I do want this to be a discussion and a decision, or a discussion amongst us, so if I say something, or you see a graphic, or something just pops up in your mind, just pop your hand up, and I'll be happy to call on you, and we can kind of have that discussion. Because I don't want this to be all me talking. I do want you to ask questions and see how I can kind of help y'all out, make you move into the future. So, the mayor beat me to this, but I still want to kind of go through this real quick just for my benefit. I'd love to hear your name again and the board that you serve on, and I'd like you to tell me what you consider to be the biggest challenge that you face as a board member, planning board member, and also as a commissioner as well. So, if you don't mind, we'll start up here with your, up here to the right of Al and left of Al, and if we can go through, and then get to the planning board. But again, name and some of the challenges that you, the biggest challenge you face as a planning board member or a commissioner.
I run bullet with the city commission. Right now, we're working on some infrastructure, trying to get that going with the roads to be completed on that. Managing growth, the biggest issue, I think.
I'm going to take some notes on what y'all say, because I want to make sure that we touch on some of these things as we do this presentation.
Mayor.
So, I'm Jackie Sargent, and I am the mayor, and I do believe right in front of us, the biggest challenge is growth and how, as I said, how we get it right. How do we make sure that the next generation doesn't look back and say, what were they thinking? Or why weren't they thinking?
I'm Danny Curran, City Board. Right now, my biggest challenge is making a decent attempt. About the last day of my term. But other than that, like the mayor said, growth, make sure we do it right. We don't look back one day and think, gosh, no, we're thinking about it.
Yeah, I'm Paul Bridges, I'm a city commissioner. The thing that I think about is, you know, we have all this growth, and we see all these diagrams of different kinds of homes, and my question would be, what kinds of homes should we be focusing on? You know, because a lot of times you'll hear people talking about affordable housing, and, you know, that's important to me, because, you know, I want folks to be able to buy a home one day, and that may mean affordable housing. But on the other hand, I recognize that neighborhoods should have homes that may be a little pricey, because that will have a little bit to do with tax base and just neighborhood value. So, that balance between affordable housing and development that really generates income for our city.
Very good, thank you.
My name's John Tovey, I'm on the Board of Commissioners. I think one of our biggest challenges is getting the infrastructure in place before we can start building and expanding. And looking at the expansion plans that we have over the next few years, is having some sort of recreation facilities. If you can have all these people in, we need to bring businesses in, shops in, recreational facilities. There's always a big challenge, it's also very costly at times.
Hi, I'm Teresa Gilree, I am one of the commissioners here. I guess my biggest concern is affordable housing and making sure that we can meet the needs of all the consumers within our community that currently live here, and offer them something, and continue to provide, and bring in new people. I mean, so that's going to be a real interesting balancing act, just because of the, some of the economic deficits that we have sometimes in the community.
And we, can we, we've got-
Oh, I'm so sorry, yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Pat Fields.
Good afternoon, first apologies for being late, and sort of, I was being grandma representative. Patricia Fields, Member of Board of Commissioners. My vision is inclusive, no one left out, thought provoking as to what we do today, what impact will it have on our city tomorrow? Will our city be inviting of others to come and make it home? And the ones that are here, proud to call it home.
Larry Thomas on the Planning Board. Basically, I just want Oxford to lose its flavor. I want it to continue to be manufacturing, agricultural, and huff of the county, and I'd like to also see the rural character of everything outside of state rural.
This, sir, my name's Michael Kinlow, I'm on the Planning Board, and I'm about to make sure that whatever our discussion goes through as we proceed forward, will include organic growth and a proper man or a physically responsible, because that includes all the needs of all of our residents, and addresses the needs of our future population as we intend to grow organically. But I apologize, I'm a little bit behind the eight ball here, because I know we were invited to this meeting about a month ago, so, but I don't have, I did not just give an agenda, and I don't understand your background and what your experience is in addressing these needs that we have going forward, so I would appreciate-
I'm going to get through all of that, I will.
So, very good. I appreciate that, but I'm going to make sure that as we address all these concerns for our community, that we're a physically responsible man.
Very good, thanks, ma'am. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, a lot of people already spoke, stole some of my thunder. George Summers, by the way, planning board. Manage growth, but so that we still maintain a hometown feel, but don't turn into a carry or a Wake Forest.
Absolutely.
Or someplace like that. And along with that, as we bring housing in, affordable housing, not just for, to have it, but as we bring in more houses, more business, that we're going to have to have employees coming in for these businesses, that they'll be able to live in Oxford, they not have to come in from Henderson or, you know, Creedmoor or somewhere else. They'll be able to live here, whether it be affordable housing as far as houses, or whether it be rental property. I've never understood, in the years that I've been in Oxford, why there hadn't been more emphasis on rental property upstairs over the downtown buildings. A lot of towns have downtown rental property, and brings more downtown livability, more downtown walking around, and more people to attend to businesses downtown. So, in general, it's what everybody else has said, plus a little bit.
Linda.
I'm Juanita Rogers, and I'm on the Planning Board. I may be a little repetitious, but growth is a great concern in this county, in the City of Oxford. But in attending meetings, and you'll ask the question, what do you see as one of the bases, or some basic needs for Oxford? And the first question or answer that will come up is affordable housing. That comes up basically in every meeting, and I think that's something that we should address.
I'm the attorney for the Planning Board, but just as a former city commissioner and as a citizen of Oxford, I think one of the challenges for Oxford is, you know, I'm 51 years old, and Oxford, when I was born, I think the population of Oxford was around 7,000, or maybe at 9 now, so we're talking about the growth of 2,000 people over a 50-year period. At the turn of the century, Oxford was like the fifth biggest city in the state. So, you know, I think for some of us who've lived here all our lives, that growth, we want growth, I mean, we want some growth, and I think, you know, you can look next door to our neighbors in Henderson, and in the last 20 years, things have kind of declined there. So, I think this is, this is an opportunity where I think we're going to have to be careful in that. I know, I hear what people are saying about growth, at the same time, my dad always said, you know, when Oxford's about to grow, we're about to hit a recession. And when I was on the City Board back in 2001, 2009, we had Oxford Park and Lexington Park come, and those nice developments were made right before the recession hit, and we had been, a year later, they would never happen. So, I would just caution everybody that, too, that, you know, don't kill the goose that laid the golden egg on this, too. There's, I think that you raise your tax base, you can provide jobs for your citizens, if we have more people here, you're going to have, you're going to have businesses that are going to want to come in here. Two, you know, one thing that hurts a lot of people of lower incomes is our water bill. Water bill is very high in City of Oxford. One reason for that is because we can't spread our cost to a lot of customers. So, and I know that we're going to probably have to have some water sewer upgrades to do that, but at the same time, if you can lower those water sewer costs by having an expanded base, I think that's going to really help the tax base, and people that are of lower incomes to be able to afford their housing. And of course, as city commissioners, you know, you might have to lower your tax rates as housing prices go up, but if you don't go crazy spending money, one of the, you know, one of the things that people complain about life is the city taxes, and if you can make those things go down, that helps a lot of people. But anyway, I don't have a dollar to fight when I'm on the attorney for the own board as a citizen, I just kind of like to say that.
Any other Planning Board members?
Hi, I have nothing I can say.
That's fine, that's fine, yeah.
Linda.
Yes, ma'am.
Linda Edwards. Well, people are going to say a few things about thinking. One thing that bothers me sometimes is we don't talk to people. We don't know what they want. We don't know what they need. I've never been called, nobody's called to me and invited to talk to me. Ask them, what do you need? And how can we do to help? I don't have a problem with growth, as long as it's the right kind of growth. I think we need better businesses here. I'm just a factory, I'm 59, so I've been here a long time still, not as long as some folk, but I've been here a long time. I've seen quite a bit. All the factories that used to be here, people had, back in the day, they said, good jobs, good insurance, they stayed here. Young folks would leave, I left, but I came back. So, you've got to have something for people to come back to. So, my main thing is not knowing what do people want. We have organizations, but nobody that I know of, I don't think the city commissioners, I know the planning board, though, our avenue is narrow, too, on the planning board. We are specific on certain things, but the city commissioners aren't. And even the county commissioners, though, we don't have time about them, but I'm going to bring them up, too, because they have a big problem in this situation, too. So, my point is, if we don't know what the people need, if I need a coat, you bring me a pair of pants, that's not going to help. So, and I feel we do need y'all. We need affordable housing, affordable, somebody who has, who has a love of affordable housing. So, people use that as a catchphrase that bothers me, because they're not located in labor. This is a labor thing. You've got people who are on welfare, who own disability, who own social security, so what is affordable to them? So, I think we need to know, one, what do people need, what do they want? How we should bring them in and at least listen to them, and then have a meeting about what they say. And we need to bring some businesses here, some good businesses. We've got all this land out here, all this stuff, we've got all these empty factories that's been sitting there for years. Somebody own that stuff. How come ain't nobody working about that? They don't even get to start about excuses.
I think at this point, that, you've given us an awful lot to think of, along with everybody else, and, you know, we want to incorporate that in.
With due respect, I'm about to be finished. So, I just wanted to end this and say, thank you for the question, and I hope everybody, okay, are we going to get notes about what you're showing us?
I can, yeah, I'll be happy to share this one.
You can give it to Cheryl Hart, our planning director, she can hand it off to others.
Yep, absolutely.
Y'all have to be today.
Yeah, I'll make sure y'all get a copy of this as we go through it, y'all are welcome to use it for whatever.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for being here, but that really kind of helps me kind of hear some of the things that y'all are going through, and, you know, I think we'll touch on a lot of those things as we go through the presentation. So, that's who I am. So, now that y'all told me who you are, tell about myself. So, I'm Chad Sarri, I work for a firm called Stewart, and we are primarily an engineering firm, but we also have a planning group, a community planning group. I grew up in a little town called Eaton, North Carolina, in the northeastern part of the state, and I moved to the Triangle area back in the mid-'90s. I worked with Wake Forest for many years as a planner there, and saw a lot of the growth that they had. I left Wake Forest and joined the planning group here and started, really, we didn't even have a planning group, and we kind of built it on the idea to help small to mid-sized communities. We don't work in Raleigh, we don't work in Charlotte, we don't work in any of the big communities. Mostly where we work is small to mid-sized communities, because we find that we can partner with that community and kind of help them kind of guide through the growth challenges that they have. So, that's kind of my profession, I'm with ECU, I live in Wake Forest now, got two teenage boys, I was telling them, my oldest blew his ACL out playing football last Friday, and has surgery tomorrow, so we'll be at Wake Bed tomorrow morning at 5:30. But anyway, that's a little bit about me. Again, our firm, we're about a 225-person firm, we've got offices in Raleigh, Durham, Charlotte, Wilmington, and Columbia. And we do work all over the state. Company's 27-years-old, and we have a really good mentality about us, a really good culture at our firm. That kind of falls in line with local governments. And then as far as our planning group, we work all, again, all across the state with local governments, counties, small towns, smaller cities, work all across the state. These are some of our clients that are on the screen, you know, and we do a variety of services. So, we provide comprehensive planning updates, we do development work writing, we do small area plans, like something in your downtown, maybe a corridor plan for a highway. We also do GIS mapping, some general consulting, and we also do some things that I really like to do, and that's kind of citizen board facilitation, and I really enjoy doing that. I like going out to different communities and just having a conversation with them, and seeing how I might be able to help out and give them some ideas on some things. So, one other thing that I also am, is when I worked in Wake Forest, after I left, I kind of retired, I got on the Planning Board, and I started on the Planning Board for about a year and a half, and then after that, I decided I wanted to run for city council or town council. And I was fortunate, I guess I could say fortunate, enough to get elected, and I'm in my second term now as a town councilman in Wake Forest. So, I understand and appreciate the seat that you sit in. I've seen planning in local government from the perspective of a staff person, from the perspective of a citizen that lives in a town, from the perspective of a planning board member, from the perspective of an elected official. And they're all different, they're all very different, and I've been able to change my perspective on the way I view things sometimes, because of the seats that I've had. I was not up for reelection last night, I'm in my midpoint of my term, so that's why I don't look exhausted. And to be honest, I don't know if I'll run for another term. It is quite a lot, I'm not going to lie, and I think those of you that sit up there understand, it is a lot. A lot of, a lot of things that get, you get pulled in different directions, and I think that, you know, everybody that sits in that seat really wants to do what's best for their community, and that's kind of the way I look for, look at it in Wake Forest. Well, I'll talk a little bit about Wake Forest. I also got involved because I thought Wake Forest was growing too fast. We have grown, it's grown extremely fast. You can look up here at this diagram, I'm going to move over here so I can kind of point to it, but, you know, we were kind of stagnant there in the, you know, '60s, and then getting into the '80s even, you know, into the early '90s, and then boom, about 1995 happened, '96 happened, '98 happened. Since then, our population has grown 253 percent. Okay? When I first moved to Wake Forest, we had, I think we had about 8,000 people there, maybe 7,800, or something like that. And we had, we had one grocery store, it was downtown, it was an old Winn-Dixie, and that's all we had, you know, and so I've been able to see some of the good things that happened with growth in Wake Forest, and also some of the bad things that happened with growth in Wake Forest. But we have seen a lot, a tremendous amount of growth that we've seen. You know, we're the 10th fastest growing community in North Carolina, top 10 out of 552 municipalities, and we stay there, we've stayed there and hovered around that point. So, we are, we continue to see a lot of growth. Every single, every single month, I sit up there where they do, and we have five or six different developments going through. You know, so one of the things that is important to me as a commissioner, one of the things that I was, thought was really important, was to talk about growth, and how can we manage growth, be smart about growth, make sure we're making decisions that are going to leave my kids and their kids in a good place, in a town that we love so much now. But it also involved economic development, you know, and I think I've heard a little bit of that tonight, you know, touched on that tonight, and, you know, we grew so fast, but no one was working in Wake Forest. They were all living there, and then they were leaving to go to work, and that's still somewhat the case. But we're making strides in that direction, and that was something that was really important to me. And, you know, some of these statistics that you see, you know, we've really tried to market ourselves better, you know, and try to say, look, we've got all these great things that are happening in Wake Forest, we've got all these universities that are around us, you know, we're seeing this high growth, we're this close to all these great things. This is our industry, you know, this is our labor force, this is our income, which is continuing to shoot up. Our unemployment rate is really low. So, we're seeing a lot of good things that are happening. One of the things that I'm really proud of, that I've kind of worked with our economic development group on, is really kind of talking about the future of what Wake Forest is, you know, and I love this graphic that our team put together for the town. It talks about, you know, us having the human capital, right? We've got the people here to work, you know, we've got a lot of research, innovation that's going on that can attract businesses and attract professionals to the area. You know, we look at our ecosystem, we have great parks, you know, we really try to preserve our greenways and our natural areas. You've got a mentor culture, you know, we've got accessibility, we're near the airport, you know, when 540 came to Wake Forest, that's when it really all changed, you know, and y'all know 540, you know, 440 was a big deal, and then 540 happened in that late '90s, and that just opened everything up, that opened the world up for Wake Forest. And being a smart city, you know, making sure that you're, you know, you have this, you know, good internet capability, places where people can plug into wifi, you know, loading, we have a loading dock that just opened up that is kind of like an entrepreneurial type industry where people come in and start a business up, and then hopefully that turns into something that can be hire employees and grow in our town. And so, all these things go to the quality of life of our citizens, right? And that's what we want to do. You want, you want, you know, there's two jobs that a town or local government should have, they should provide for the protection of their citizens, and they should provide for their quality of life. And there's a lot of different things that kind of build off of that, but if it all boils down to it, those are two very important things that we all do. So, not everything, and y'all can attest to this, is always, you know, just wonderful things that go with growth. There's also a side that citizens get a little upset sometimes, and, you know, as you continuously grow, you're going to have probably more and more people that might be packing a house and upset with some things. So, just a little bit of humor, as we go through it, there are some acronyms that are out there. There's the NIMBYs, right? We've all heard that, not in my backyard, you know, I think it's great, but not in my backyard. Then we have the YMBs, those are the ones that, yeah, I want in my backyard, I think it's great. And then sometimes you have the Dudes. The Dudes are the developers under delusions of entitlement. You have some of those, and this is all a joke, by the way. And then you have the Cave. Those are citizens against virtually everything. So, you know, and then you have the Banana. And the Bananas build absolutely nothing anywhere near anything, right? And so, these are kind of some funny acronyms, but, you know, as you see a lot of growth, you do kind of see some of these things. It's just kind of, a kind of a fun thing that we as planners kind of hear and have these acronyms, but these are some things that you do have, you know, as you continue to grow. So, as I mentioned, you know, we have a lot of growth, and we talk about some of the really good things, right? So, we get a strong tax base, we, you know, get more money that goes towards our parcel recreation systems. We do get, as development comes along, it implements some of our transportation items that we have. So, there are some good things that happen with growth, but there are also pressures, you know, there's pressures. What do I hear, give one guess, what do I hear most as a commissioner that people are upset with?
Traffic.
I'll give you a head hint, it's up here in the top corner.
Traffic.
Right? Traffic. That is something that, you know, is, it's one of those things, I think someone had mentioned kind of doing the infrastructure, you know, before the growth comes, and it's a hard thing to do with transportation, you know, it really is, it's a hard thing to do. Sometimes, especially working with DOT, you know, we all know the challenges of that, you know, they've had a lot of financial issues recently, and, you know, it can be very difficult. And so, I think one of the, one of the things that we do the most of is traffic, and how do we mitigate that? You know, y'all know that as a city, you know, you can't just flip a switch and fix traffic, you know, it's something that takes time and planning and budgeting and money and coordination, all those things have to happen. So, that's one of the things we feel pressure on. Public services, and that's another one, right? As you grow as a town or as a city, you've got to provide more services, you've got to provide more police, you've got to provide fire, you've got to provide emergency services, you have to provide more recreational services for folks. Your utilities have to, so there's all these pressures that come along with growth that can put a strain on the city. And so, that's why y'all talked about kind of some- And so that's why y'all talked about kind of some things, all, all of them were, were great feedback. Um, but it is incredibly important to be smart about how you grow, be strategic about how you grow. And all the things that y'all talked about tonight are things that go into a comprehensive plan. You know, y'all, and we'll get to that in a little bit more detail soon, but y'all have a comprehensive plan that was done in two thousand and nine, right? And, and, and that's a, that's a, that's an eternity in the world of, of planning, especially in a, in a growing area. Typically, you want to look at those every five to seven years. Um, so, you know, y'all, y'all are due, y'all are due for something like that. Um, but anyway, so, so public services are certainly a strain. And the one that gets me, um, that, that is, that we, y'all have actually talked, talked on tonight is this, this graph right here. This is our, this is our average housing prices in Wake Forest, okay? Average housing prices. See that number right there?
No.
What is it?
Four hundred, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars.
My friend of mine, the broker around there, he says the average acre around there goes right about a hundred and eighty thousand. Is that right?
That, it's about right, yeah. It, it, it has, but you, you see this, right? So, so this is, this is, this is, um, this is good, you know, this, this is good, good steady climb. This is not, right here, that, that's, that's too much, too fast. And what does that create? Okay, y'all, y'all talked about tonight, increase the housing problem.
Yeah.
An affordable housing problem, a big affordable housing problem. Um, and so with, with, for me and our board right now, that is a big issue that we're dealing with. And, you know, I think someone over here mentioned defining what affordable housing is, right? It's different, you can't just do a blanket affordable housing plan. It's different to every community that you work in, every place you work in. You know, it may be different from y'all work to Butler. You know, it's different from, from Oxford to Wake Forest. It's different from Wake Forest to Raleigh, different from Wake Forest to Knightville. I mean, all, all of those are different. And, and so I think defining what it is, i- is, is really, really important. Um, defining what it is, defining on different ways on how to mitigate it and help out because there are certain things that you can't do because of state law. You know, there's certain things you have to stay in the parameters of certain things. So, so I think kind of find, finding that balance, um, and figuring out what is affordable? How do you work with the development to make that happen? How do you work with yourself or the county to make that happen? Those are all challenges that we're facing right now. So again, some of the things that we hear, right? Like it's not always the good things. We get, you know, controversy with townhomes, right? That, that was, that's a big thing, townhomes, apartments have become a, a big issue. You know, these are things that are getting all over the news. Um, you know, working with affordable housing, a crisis, it, it's a crisis, you know, it really is. It is, you know, going back to look at this number, I don't know how I can't be, you know? That, that, that is, that's, that's not a healthy amount of increase and it's not sustainable. Um, so, again, the good and the bad with growth, right? There, there's good and, and there are challenges that come with it. And, and I think, you know, y'all, Oxford are, are on the brink of that, you know, y'all, y'all are. So I'm gonna pause just for a minute and just see if there's any questions on anything I talked about right then. So I'm, I've got several slides, I'm gonna take a, just a quick pause to see if anybody has any questions or thoughts or anything like that.
What's your current ratio of people after the growth that you've had who live and work in Wake Forest versus being a better looking area?
Yeah, um, I don't know the exact number, um, it has gotten better. Um, and I think that, um, I think it will continue to get better, um, because of the way the world is changing. You know, I, I think a lot of people, um, when, when COVID happened, it changed the typical commuter going into work, you know? A lot of people work from home now, they're gonna continue to work from home. So that kind of throws a whole different dynamic into it, you know, it really, really does. And I think it skews that number, uh, you know, because, uh, where, you know, they, they may not be working in Raleigh, but they're still working for a Raleigh company, you know what I'm saying? So I think it is increasing and I think those opportunities are getting better. Um, one of the things that we cha, we have a challenge in Wake Forest is really, we have a, a industrial shortage. We just don't have any true industry, we don't. Uh, we have a very small industrial park, um, and it is built out. And, and, and we have no other real industrial land at all. Um, so that, that concerns me a little bit from the ma, manufacturing end of things, um, you know, from, from, from that type of area. I think one thing that we are getting better in and getting smarter in is more the technology type thing. Um, we're getting better in that area. I don't know the number, but I think it is increasing, it is getting better as far as. Yes, sir.
Uh, you mentioned previously that you've experienced a lot of good things and some bad things that have happened throughout the course of your tenure. My question is, what are some of the bad things that you've experienced and how have guys mitigated that?
Yeah, well, I think, I think one of the bad things is, is the housing issue we're having right now. I mean, I think.
Specifically, you know, like what type, what type of bad things?
Yeah, so, so, you know, I, I think that what happened is we went from having a, a pretty affordable place in Wake Forest back in the nineties. And then it just shot up and it's continuing to shoot up. And I think that what we've seen is, um, you know, people, there's a stigma on certain types of houses. Townhomes seem to be a really, give a stigma and, and, you know, I, I, I don't understand it myself sometimes. Uh, but I think that, you know, sometimes they are more, more affordable products. Uh, they get built great, they're just like a single-family home, they're just attached. In fact, they're, I think they're referred to by, um, by building code as being a single-family attached builder. You know? Um, so I, I, I think dealing with, with kind of that mentality that, you know, i- it, it doesn't have to be a single-family home on a half-acre lot to be of value, you know, and to be of, um, you know, to, to, to be okay.
A lot of times it's a matter of demographics because we have younger people coming in, moving into these high-tech, these RDPs and such.
Yeah.
They want to start a home, they don't need to have a three-thousand-square-foot place to live. They want something reasonable, everything, uh, start a family with, like when I first started as an actuary or kind of mutual, as a townhome, right downtown. That's all I needed.
Yeah.
And a lot of people in Wake Forest at that point in time experienced the same things, but then you have supply and demand issues, right? You have higher paying jobs coming in, more people coming in, and therefore just people are taking advantage of it in the Wake Forest location. Probably saying, how would that, uh, relate to our experience moving forward? Because a little bit further out from these places where those jobs are going to be located. So therefore, if we're gonna, maybe do a couple of things, let's entice people to move here, however, but be able to afford the infrastructure to support that as well as, you know, food, clothing, and, and the taxation base has to fall to be able to support them, be supportive of that. But we can't leave our, our current people who live here, who are gonna die here out in the cold as well, you know? So what we need is a comprehensive solution that's gonna take care of not only the people who are older, elderly, and on a certain type of fixed income type, uh, situation, as well as the new people who are gonna become migrating in here, hopefully, if that comes to pass. So I'm just looking forward to hearing more about that.
It's a balance, sure. Uh, yes, yes, sir.
So you've been around for twenty, twenty-five years in Wake Forest. So if you look back, what do you wish you'd done differently?
Ooh, wow, um. Uh, I think that one thing that really hurt, uh, and, and it's evident now, is I think that we waited too long to update our comprehensive plan. Um, we had one that was very outdated and waited, you know, we had our extreme growth, really a lot of, was still going, but a lot of it was happening while we had an outdated comprehensive plan. And as y'all all know, you, you base your land use decisions when a rezoning happens on your comprehensive plan. The state law actually requires you to do that now. Um, and I think that caused certain types of developments to pop up where if we would have had a more strategic updated plan, it may not have happened. And, and the, the issues from that are strain of infrastructure, maybe on the outskirts of town, right? So, you know, we really had to, you know, extend utilities where perhaps it was better to grow closer to our core. Traffic issues, um, you know, that's another kind of thing that, that, you know, had we had something like that in place, it may not have happened. So I would say if we could go back all over again, it would have been great to have more of an updated plan. Um, when we experience that growth, rather than being reactionary and getting one done about halfway through all that growth. In fact, we did it then and now we're doing another one now. So we're actually, the town's actually in the process of updating it again as we speak right now. So that's something I would say. I know there's some questions, yes, sir.
Yeah, I just wondered, has there ever been a study that, um, a percentage of affordable housing versus for want of a better expression, unaffordable housing, the happy medium? Has, has there ever been a study?
Well, you know, again, I, I think it's one of those things where it, 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 it would have to be your own community to kind of figure that out, you know? Cause you can't really do a blanket affordable housing type thing until you really define what affordable housing is. And, and I think that's unique to every community, you know?
There's some, yeah.
But, um, but there, there are studies out there, I mean, there, there, there are affordable housing plans that, that people are doing. City Raleigh has actually just listed an RFP to do, uh, uh, an affordable housing study and plan for the whole city, um, as a whole. Um, you know, and so I, I think people are moving in that direction, but again, I think it's so, um, I think it has to be customized to that community, it really does.
Captain, can I say something? You're exactly right. Um, as far as affordable housing, I dare say that these developers that have an interest in coming to Oxford and building all these homes believe that that is what they are providing and it's in the eye of the beholder. If you live here and you've been here for fifty years, just like the gentleman to your right who described the, uh, rate of growth of two thousand people in the last fifty years, you know, affordable housing looks different. If you go back to that last slide regarding Wake Forest and the, uh, four-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-dollar average price of a home, that's why you're here tonight. That's why we're here tonight. I dare say that number is darn close if you go to Holly Springs, Apex, Fuquay Varina, all of these other communities that are surrounding, uh, are close enough to the Research Triangle area. That's the reason that these people are coming here, they're looking for the affordable piece of property that they can develop and build homes for half that price.
Yep.
And folks don't mind driving to Durham or Raleigh, you know, for these jobs. If they're taking those jobs and they're not doing them from home or doing them remotely, that's what's driving the interest. I mean, that's the reality of the situation. You read the newspaper, you look at the, the regional news, it's seemingly every other day that there's a new company coming to the Raleigh-Durham area with eight hundred, a thousand, fifteen hundred new jobs. That's what's going on and that's why they have, um, come to our area and are looking at all of this affordable land that we have and looking at an opportunity to build these houses for these folks who can afford that price.
Yes, ma'am.
In your growth, what did you all do for the citizens that were there in Wake Forest when the tax bases began to increase? Um, what, what, was there a medium for them? Um, I'm quite sure the majority of, well, a lot of the citizens there were reaching and/or at fixed income levels and in tax increases was not something that they were looking for. Um, and was there any displacement or relocation of people? And if so, how did you, what, what method did you use to?
Um, so, so we haven't raised our taxes in a really long time. Um, and so we, we, we really, I don't remember, I think the last time we did it, it was, uh, maybe a half a penny that was going towards the fire department. So that was like, that was, we're very, very conservative in that respect. Um, we have, um, I, I, I'll tell you this.
You have a four-year and eight-year revaluation process.
Yep, yep.
Which one?
What's that?
Was it four or eight years?
Um, so the, um, I, I think the way you look at it is when, when new growth comes in, what it does is it increases your tax base, not necessarily increases taxes, it increases your tax base. And what that allows you to do is provide more services to some of those older areas. So we were able to do, you know, we were able to put a community center in the area that needed it. Um, we were able to upgrade some parks that were older parks, you know, maybe an older parts of town, work on some road improvements, install sidewalks. You know, so, so I think that's how you're able, as you build that tax base up, you're able, you know, certainly you have these newer neighborhoods, but it all goes back, you can't forget about the old neighborhoods.
Right, right.
And, and I think those are things that we've done in our, in those communities to kind of, you know, kind of help out, you know, kind of. So they can benefit from that growth that happens. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make two quick comments and I think we probably want you to go back so we can hear more.
Yeah, sure.
Um, but one, when you talked about redoing the comprehensive plan, am I correct in thinking, given your, your example of maybe utilities were stretched too far because development was too far outside, that if we redid our plan, which allowed for higher density closer into town versus further out, then what we're doing is telling developers, we want to grow from the inside out, rather than have these satellite, satellite communities? So I just want to make sure that I kind of got the feel for that. And secondly, and you don't have to talk about it a lot now, but we just got a new rotary in town. Am I correct in thinking that if we had, um, included more roundabouts in future, uh, road development, especially related, that that could help alleviate because it moves traffic better?
This is the one, the one right here called Locks Ever?
Yes.
Yeah, I looked at it, I saw it. Um, but yes, yeah, absolutely. Any other?
Thank you.
One more thing, one quick before Miss Jackie cuts us off. From what Alan said, what Chris said. Look, cause my mind, yeah, you can have an increase in tax base, y'all only increase by half a cent. But along with all this influx, they don't always buy the new houses. And with the four-year plan, my house increases by fifty thousand, maybe in eight years it's reached another fifty. So now I'm paying taxes on a hundred thousand dollars more than I was paying taxes on, even though the tax rate hasn't changed. And that's when it hits me. You know, I may be two years old, I'm on that fixed income. You know, that tax rate being the same as it is today, my house is worth a hundred thousand dollars more than it is today, I'm gonna pay twice as much tax.
That's true.
And, you know, so I don't think saying, oh, our tax base increases, you know, is gonna save the world if we're gonna build a community center. You can build all the community centers you want, it's still money out of my pocket every year, more and more and more.
So you gotta lower the rate. Lower the rate.
Yeah, so I, I only break that way.
Lower the rate of tax rate.
That you can't just say it increases the tax base, because that doesn't solve the problem.
No, I didn't say it solves the problem.
So, I mean, can you have this, can your grandfather is a Pittsburgh?
That's all that's on my mind.
Yeah, I mean, that makes it to a lot of people.
Anybody over thirty-eight or, on an income basis.
Exactly.
You, uh, fixed rate forever, until the house is sold or, you know, whatever.
Well, I think the cities and counties, though, I mean, they can lower the rate, though, I mean, they can lower the rate to make up for those, if they do it.
Right, as a property, but, yeah, just wait, I, I can share a plan. I have a question for you.
When's the last time you saw that?
I mean, yeah.
I don't know, you see that.
Okay, so we're, we're looking at updating a comprehensive plan, that's the basic issue we have to deal with right now. Okay, because in, in that regard, we're looking at is managing strategic growth. How are we gonna do it? In your opinion, what are the key drivers of management? What statistics, what are the key drivers, aside from population, income and things of that nature? What are the key drivers from your experience that are required to be looked at very closely to make sure that we can mitigate any mistakes moving forward?
Can I pause you on that and keep moving forward? So I am, I am gonna touch on that, I promise, I've got, that's one of my topics.
Okay, I want you to.
Uh, it's, it's, I promise. So let me, let me, cause I, I know, I've only got y'all for about another forty-five minutes. So I want to make sure we get through a lot of good stuff and, and, uh, you know, keep y'all, keep, keep things on the track. Um, so, you know, you talked about market and housing trends, you know, and, and kind of continued on. Kind of, you know, I, I like the concentric circle sort of thing that you kind of have, uh, you have growth around your metropolitan areas, you know? It's not perfect, it doesn't happen exactly like this, but it does give you an idea of kind of where the growth happens, you know, through the years, you know? We talked about, you know, the nineties, eighties and nineties kind of, kind of going here, five forty happened and then, you know, nineties, two thousands, you really saw this happen, you know, Wake Forest right here. But I see, you know, the future kind of going out here, right? And, you know, I put a star in store where Oxford is and I, I, I kind of put these rings around Durham and Raleigh. And, and, you know, you, you see how, how, you know, Oxford fits into that, right? And, and so it, it, it's, it's gonna come out your way. Um, you know, and I think y'all touched on it, it's how do you deal with it? You know, where do you say growth should go, where should, where should it not go? Um, but I thought this was interesting to see kind of where y'all fit in. Um, and you talked about population, so I looked at your, your population, I think y'all are right at nine thousand now. Um, but, you know, you're seeing a steady growth, you know, a, a steady growth, you know, moving, moving forward. I think they had, I think they had y'all about a six-point-three percent growth rate since twenty-ten. So, so you are, you are growing, but I think with all the developments that, that Alan had mentioned, as somebody's on, you're gonna see that shoot up. It's, it's not gonna stay, it's gonna start moving up a little quicker, you know, as, as time goes on. But I, I thought that was interesting. I also wanted to share some other information that, that I see. And Alan touched on this a little bit about people moving out to the suburbs and moving out of some of the bigger cities. They're doing that. Um, if you look at this, this trend, uh, and I, I really like this a lot. You look at kind of the, uh, the, um, population group. So if you look over here, this is the, this is the twenty to twenty-nine crowd right here. Uh, groups in their twenties are gonna shrink in size, okay? And this, and this age group.
Okay.
And, and this group typically likes to live in more of an urban setting, right? I mean, they like to live in, in, in a closer to cities and, like you mentioned, you know, smaller, you know, younger crowd. Um, so that's, just remember that. So moving into the second group, this is kind of the, the thirty to forty-nine age. So this is, this is grouped as maybe in a, you know, family formation. Um, and these groups typically live in a more suburban style, okay? Well, moving forward to the fifty to sixty-four group, this is the empty nesters. And this group is shrinking, but they also kind of have a tendency to live in the urban group. Um, and then you move to the next age up, and this is the retirement age. Uh, these typically like to live in a suburban area. So if you look at these statistics, what, what are y'all seeing?
See red light, green light.
Right, you're seeing, you're seeing.
But he lived previously.
You're seeing, you're, we're seeing cities, bigger cities, people moving out. People here are moving into the suburbs.
Okay.
Okay, so, so if you look at these groups, these are the largest groups, right? And, and so if you look at this trend, that's why people are moving out here, okay? That, that's why they're here, along with other things, but if you look at these statistics from a demographic standpoint, um, you see it happening. Uh, and this is projected from, from twenty-twenty to twenty-third, during the next ten years.
Is that specifically for what area was that nationwide?
This is nationwide, nationwide, yeah.
Huh, okay.
But anyway, that, that's my source anyway, John Burner's Real Estate.
Perfect.
Um, so anyway, um, so as far as North Carolina's kind of, um, growth, um, this is another kind of interesting statistic is, this is from the Census Bureau. You kind of see the natural increase sort of going down a little bit, right? But you see this net migration going up. So what does that tell us? That means that more people from outside of North Carolina are moving to North Carolina versus people moving around in North Carolina, okay? So, you know, we all know this, every time you look at something, you know, North Carolina's one of the fastest growing states, um, you know, Raleigh Durham area, you know, top five everywhere you look, you know, to live, work, and play, that's the trend. And these kind of statistics support it. Um, talk about how, you know, we talk about, like, what do people like, what's that kind of next trend as far as housing tips? Um, so people like outdoor activities and amenities. Those are important things for people who live in a community. What's interesting about it is they like smaller yards, but they like more community open space. The trend is people like to have, they don't want to maintain their yard, people don't like to have big yards anymore. They just don't, not many anyway. I like, I like it, but a lot of people don't. Um, but, but the trend is for people to have maybe a little smaller yards, but to have more community open space. Places they can gather, places they can go, you know, throw the football or swing on a swing or meet with their neighbor. Um, uh, growth of the home office is something else I think you're gonna see, and you're starting to see. I heard something from a builder that told me, uh, about six months ago, his hottest item was a home that had two home offices in it. Because people were working from home and they were gonna continue to do that. Um, so you're gonna continue to see kind of home office. I don't think that's gonna die down. I really don't think we're ever gonna go back to exactly like it was pre- COVID with people working from home. Um, mixed-use neighborhoods, and I don't know if y'all seen a lot of this yet, but what mixed-use can be a lot of different things. Um, it can be a, a mixture of housing products in a community, so maybe you have, you know, a, a half-acre product, you have a quarter-acre product, you have some townhomes, maybe even apartments. You know, that might be a mixed-use community. It also could be a mixture of land uses. So, you know, you could have, um, some townhomes, you know, you could have some apartments, you could have some commercial that go in there. We're starting to see a lot of that in Wake Forest now, where we never had seen that before. Um, you know, someone had mentioned before about, um, you know, having, uh, apartments over some commercial space in downtown. Uh, well, we're starting to see people build those, uh, new, um, you know, in near shopping centers. So having some retail or having an office and then having some apartments upstairs. Um, we just had a couple of brand-new buildings downtown Wake Forest that have retail on the bottom and, or they have a retail on the bottom and some offices, and then they have three floors of condos. They, they were rented out before, or they were, uh, sold out before they even got past like the first week or so. So it, it's, it's, it's a trend and the people are seeing it. Um, technology, I think they call it smart homes, where, you know, a lot of times now you can use your smartphone to turn on your lights or, you know, start your oven or, you know, do, I've got one of those Traeger grills and that's a lot smarter than me, so I'm able to cook it, you know, I'm able to pop it on and, as long as it's got wood chips in it, I'll be able to go ahead and get my, my ribs going. Um, you know, universal design and accessibility are important. Um, you know, this is particularly good for some of the retirement communities that are there. Like you're seeing a lot more of those pop up. We've seen a really big surge of those kind of fifty-five and older communities that have popped up in Wake Forest. And they all have a very similar design to them. They're usually single floor, they have a garage out front, um, and they're very predictable for the, for the, the retirement community that are living there. Um, infill development is becoming more popular. Y'all may start, y'all may have already started seeing that. And, you know, infill is when you have some older neighborhoods that maybe there's some, uh, smaller houses. And, you know, uh, someone comes in and buys a couple of them, tears them down and rebuilds a bigger house or builds something in that spot. Um, so infill development can be a little tricky because you want to make sure when this happens, you do respect, um, you know, the, the area that it's in. What you don't want to see happen is, is someone, you know, you have this kind of character of the street, like, an example might be like a Mill Village or something like that, where someone comes in, you know, all your homes have a similar structure and similar size to them. Someone comes in bulldozes at least, you know, four gigantic homes, doesn't fit in. Um, so you've got to be real careful with infill development, particularly when y'all have more of a historic town like you do. And I think that's something, you know, that, that's something that would go, talking about comprehensive plans, that's something that should be addressed, um, do that. And the thing that I love about it is that the kitchen is still the center of focus for homes. Um, that makes me happy because, you know, you, you, you always think about people kind of gathering in the kitchen and that's where they spend their time, and that still remains the, something that's really important to them. So, so these are some things that, that are important and some trends that, you know, y'all may already be seeing, um, you know, in the housing market, um, that's gonna kind of continue on. Um, you know, you see them in, in, in entire growing communities. Any questions on that? We'll move on. Yes?
What about, uh, housing associations developments? Is, is that a negative or is that a positive? What's your experience?
Like teacher buddies?
Yeah.
Home officers? Um, I think that, um, I think that they are good when they're run, run properly. Um, I think that, um, in most of the communities now, especially the ones we're seeing in Wake Forest, there's so much open space and there's so many amenities that you have to have a strong HOA. Um, and I, I think that, um, you know, that is something that is, is a, is a private thing, right? The, the local government can't really, you know, have a, a say-so in an HOA. But you can require them to have one, you know, when they have open space and amenities and there's common area. Um, so I, I think that we don't have a lot of problems with them. I think what happens is, um, you know, the developer retains the, the rights, I think, of the HOA until there's like fifty-one percent of the homes, you know, and then he turns it over to the, to the, to the owner or something. So we don't have any issue with them. I think the key is just make sure they're run properly and that they're set up. It, you know, there's not a whole lot you can do from a, a city's perspective, you know, kind of intertwined with some of the things they have. But they do, a lot of times HOAs can enforce things that the local government can't. You know, so a lot of times they'll have regulations in deciding that the homes have to be, or the size, certain size of a home has to be. Y'all can't regulate that, but they can, um, you know, so, anyway. Yes, sir?
Um, okay, so you're a consultant, what, planner?
Yes.
Right, and you're here to.
All of them.
And you're here to help us as a board understand, um, making right decisions as we going, go into developing land. Um, so my question is, is this something that you're not gonna have all the answers in the beginning? Because I, I'm telling you, I'm sitting here and I'm thinking to myself, you know, this looks like we're gonna have to reevaluate af- after each development, you know? Uh, you know, we get a development done, then we as a board have to see how that goes and then make some more decisions, planning board has to make more decisions. So this isn't a, like a one-shot deal here. I mean, it sounds to me like it's, it's something we gotta reevaluate over time.
So, so we kind of all keep going back to the comprehensive plan, right? And using that, that kind of as, as the basis. And during, uh, during a comprehensive plan process, um, there's a tremendous amount of public engagement that's involved.
Right.
Um, it also, um, you know, you, you have a survey where you hope you really get it out in the community. Um, you have public meetings, you have, you use social media, you do your best and you go to civic groups, you, you try to be at festivals that the town might have or, you know, you really try to get to, because, because at the end of the day, the, the comprehensive plan should be what the people want, right? I mean, that's, that's, as a le-, you know, as elected body and, and planning board, um, you know, your, your role is to represent the citizens of, of the community. And so it's very critically important, we, we do comprehensive plans all across the state, and it is incredibly important to get good feedback. Uh, one of the other things that happened during, during the process is there's a series of stakeholder meetings. So, uh, you know, people that are involved in the community, we sit down and talk to them and interview them and say, okay, hey, what, what's going good? What do you think the town needs? You know, that type of stuff. So there's a tremendous amount of public engagement. You're not gonna get everything right, right? I mean, nothing's gonna be perfect. Um, but I think with a comprehensive plan, what you do is you set yourself up where you don't have to reevaluate things every, every time a development happens. Um, you know, as, as part of a comprehensive plan, you've got guidance and, and recommendations that, that come from all the people that were involved. And it talks about, uh, part of it's a future land use map. And that future land use map will help you guide to the decisions, like, you know, if you see something and, and you've got it designated as a, as a rural area, then that's what it needs to be, you know, and if, and if it's not, then you need to change your plan. Um, but it should be something that you're comfortable with when you go through the process, and it's not something that happens overnight. A comprehensive planning process can go anywhere from sometimes eight, ten, twelve, fourteen months. So it's not something that just happens overnight. It, it is a comprehensive process for a comprehensive plan. Um, but all of those things are involved with it, and you hope and, and you plan for that end result to be a document that the board endorsed, that the planning board endorsed, that the citizens have endorsed. Um, and it gives you those kind of tools to make those land use decisions, so you don't have to do that every time a development happens. And, 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 you know, you, you have to use that, you say, okay, here's this development, here's what they're trying to do. Is it consistent with what we adopted in this comprehensive plan? Yes or no? And, and if it's not, then you probably need to say no, you know? And, and if it is, then, hey, that's what y'all all talked about, that's what the citizens talked about, we're on the same page. Um, and, and that's why I think that's critically important to look at one of those every five to seven years, particularly in a high-risk community, because a lot can happen in five years.
I think more specifically, um, what it says is that once you put a stake in the ground and you create a comprehensive plan, it's a dynamic process. It's reevaluated, most more, more information has been acquired through new developments.
Yes.
New experience, new traffic patterns, new infrastructure, et cetera. So how much frequency, what frequency of advising and consulting will be required to make sure that we can maintain an optimal path for the city and, 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 and the citizens? Is that, is it, is it a quarterly meeting and a reevaluation? Is it a semi-annual? How would that work?
Prob- probably yearly, you probably need to take a look at it yearly, you know, and see how things are going. Uh, is it working right? Is it, is it not working right? Um, you know, and it's just one of those things where you, you really try to stay on top of it, because if you don't, then you know, seven, eight years have passed.
But in general, every time for a stake in the plan, it's every five to seven years? Is that correct or not?
No, no, no. What I was saying is, is, is when you adopt a comprehensive plan, um, it's good to sort of really do a comprehensive reevaluation of it every five to seven years.
Right.
Not necessarily.
What I'm saying is that to reset the baseline would be every five to seven years and then you, and you would manage in the middle.
Yeah, right, yeah. I mean, you look at it in the middle now. The thing to remember about a comprehensive plan is that it's a policy document, too. It's not the law. It's a, it's a guidance, you know, from the community. The laws are your UDOs and your, your ordinances, your code ordinances, things like that. This is a guide. It's a guide to help you make good decisions. That's what it is, so, yeah. But yeah, typically you want to really try to look at it holistically every five to seven years. Um, but it's good to look at it every year too and say, hey, how, how's this thing working? How's it, how's it, how's it doing? You know, do we, do we really screw it up or do we, do we get it right, you know? So yeah, what's other, other questions?
If you're in the, in forums and input, and citizens and stakeholders and what have you, how do you get that?
Yeah.
Seems we've had some instances in the last couple of years here in Oxford. I've seen it go out as far as looking for surveys, as far as taking backup and input. A roundabout, which I dearly love, is a perfect case in point. For the last two years or longer, we've been talking about it and then the comprehensive plan, when they dug the first round of dirt, people thought we were putting in a atomic bomb in that.
That's true.
The uproar that happened for the last six months has been how much we don't need it. We're spending money, we're doing this, we're doing that. But yet it was publicly discussed, publicly disclosed, put out a master plan in the last two to three years. Evidently, we're not doing well enough in getting that information back, getting that feedback. Because that's not the only cases, boy, there's other cases that's been going on.
You're always gonna have some people that, no matter what you do, they didn't know about it. Um, but I, I think that, you know, one of the tactics that, that we've had, and I'm gonna tell you it, during COVID, it's been extremely challenging to, to get public input. Um, what we ended up doing and we ended up finding that we, we got more people participating, we did start doing, um, virtual public meetings. You know, you think crazy, why would I pick up a virtual meeting? But we've had five times as many people participate because they're able just to plug in on their phone or their, their tablet or whatever and watch it participate, and they don't have to leave their house. Um, so, so we, we, we found that we find out we have more participation. Now, we still have the in-person meetings and, and things like that, but I, I think one of the things that we've, we've found is that every community's different and you kind of have to go to the people to get their feedback. You know, rather than expecting them to come to you, you kind of gotta go to them. So we've tried to start working with civic clubs, churches, um, trying to cater public events that are maybe around festivals that, that the, the city's having. You know, maybe there's like a parade or maybe there's, um, you know, something going on that we can tie it to. And so we found out by doing that, we get a lot more participation than just putting a survey out and saying, hey, fill it out, you know? Um, so I think you gotta be creative, for sure. Um, you really do. You gotta be deliberate about it. You really, really have to work hard at it. Um, and, and just make it as convenient as you can, of course. You know, that's, that's the key. Any other questions? Okay. Okay, so, um, why do, why do we plan, all right? Why, why do we, why do we plan? You know, we, we, we plan, uh, every day in our life, we plan to go to the grocery store or we, you know, we, we plan to pick kids up. But as far as local government does, what are our main things? Just like, you know, number one, first and foremost, first and foremost, we serve our families. You know, I think that's, that's the most important part. Try to get in front of potential problems, and planning is trying to get ahead of it. Planners are problem solvers, and trying to get out ahead of those things, plan to avoid some of the issues that you have. Um, prepare for quality growth. We've heard a lot of that tonight, and a lot of, a lot of discussions have been about growth. And you gotta be in conformance with state law, you know? So the way, uh, North Carolina works is that there's a general assembly. They say, okay, local governments, you can do this. Um, and you have to stay within those parameters on certain things, you know, on all of it. Um, but that's all the planning, you know? And so what does it really mean? You know, I think that I had a professor in college that said that planning was like having a piece of pie. And you got all these slices on it. You got a slice for transportation, you got a slice for land use, you got a slice for economic development, you got a slice for utilities, and, and, and planning kind of your fingers in all of it, right? Um, so, so, you know, it is all these things. It, it's, it's, it's land use, it's, it's, you know, historic preservation, it's, it's transportation, it's safety. It's, it's transportation, it's safety, it's, you know, all of those things that go into it. Um, it's not just land use. I think a lot of times people get lost in, in planning, just being revolved around land use, but it's a whole lot more than that. Um, you know, so just a real quick little history on planning. I, I love doing this because I, I, I love history and I think it all makes sense kind of how ordinances and, and zoning and planning how to tie together. So, so really the, you know, the, y'all have a great grid system, you know, in Oxford. It's an awesome grid system. And I mean, with the, uh, the streets that you have, particularly in your older part of town. You know, this, this actually came into, to the, the grid system was actually back in other times. So we're going back like three thousand years, you know, three thousand B.C., way more than that. Um, this is actually your town right here to the right. So you kinda, kinda see the comparison of the great grid system that y'all have versus a city that was done, you know, three thousand B.C. So, so one of the early things was, was a grid system. And why was it done? Well, it was a good way to, to expand a city fast, right? You could get people around really quickly. Um, you know, if a military, you know, a lot of times military groups were conquering places and they kind of built this grid system in to get the services around. Um, you know, it really, um, has become something that you really see a lot of, uh, in downtown settings. And you can see it sometimes being replicated in newer communities that uses like this, this grid system. So that's one thing. The other part that I think is important to understand is garden city. So this was something that was early in the nineteen hundreds. Um, you know, um, the, the idea of it was that, that cities were getting very crowded and people didn't have enough open space. And so there was a theory that came about, about garden cities and, and trying to incorporate parks into design. And so, you know, a lot of things that we have now have utilized this principle. You know, most communities you have, most communities that you see now have amenities, open space and things of that nature. Um, zoning and setbacks. You know, this is kind of the, the overall thing with land use, right? And so this zoning and, and setbacks sort of came into being in newer cities. You know, they were having tall buildings that were coming up. People were having, um, issues with, with sanitation. There was no sunlight, they were blocked out. So zoning came into being, kind of separate some of these land uses, provide setbacks and building heights on things. And of course, we utilize that today, you know, in all of our codes. The last one that I think is important because I think this is a trend that, that we are seeing and that we try to incorporate in a lot of our plans that we do, and that's called a transset zoning. And really what this is, is it, it really provides a, a breakdown and sort of a natural progression from open space and natural areas to more of an urban area. And you kinda have, you know, your, your higher density areas closer, you know, to, to the urban areas. And as you move out, it becomes a little more suburban, you know, and less dense. And, um, you know, I think we talked about that, how it can, um, you know, really i- if you were to, let's say if you were to take some of those more dense areas and bring them out here, then it strains your infrastructure, right? I mean, it, it adds those issues that we talked about. So I think this is something that's really uh, a trend that you're seeing most land use plans really try to use as a basis when they start being designed, um, as you go through things. So I mentioned as far as what you're required to do. So the state law says, okay, local governments, these are your things you can do. Uh, you know, and so, you know, there are, recently, there were some development regulations that really kind of narrowed it down, some of the things that y'all deal with as far as land use goes. Um, it went through, uh, ordinances, what the processes are, um, what the authority can be of the planning board, uh, and what, what, and, and the board commissioners, dealing with subdivisions and really narrowing down your, your, um, conflicts of interest. But I think the most important thing, and I've got it in red here, and this is a good thing because we've been talking about tonight, is that for the first time in North Carolina land use law, the state of North Carolina as of, uh, July first, twenty twenty-two, requires all towns, cities, counties um, to have a adopted comprehensive plan if they want to have zoning authority, you know? And to me, that's a long time, it took way too long for us to get to this point. I mean, even South Carolina had required it before we did it. And so, so this is really important because it really does show that there is an emphasis on thinking strategically about how you're gonna grow as a community. And so that's a really, really important thing, I think, um, when it comes to, uh, this thing, this, um, recent set of legislation. Um, and then y'all, y'all deal with this. Um, you know, really, one of the things that's important and y'all, y'all are starting to deal with this now. I'm sure you've done your ones to the update. Really, um, as part of it, it said you have three, three types of decisions to make. Um, you have a legislative decision, um, you have a legislative decision would be like a rezoning case. You have a quasi judicial process, which is a special use permit or variance. Um, you have an advisory board, which is your planning board, and then you have administrative process. And really, this is everything that boils down to the decisions that, uh, you make, make the recommendations on and the board makes, um, in making their decisions. So a little history, little, little land use legislation, not always exciting to talk about. I see all y'all in, I'm not sure if you have. Uh, any questions on that or the board?
Well, we're taking questions. Can you go back to the last slide so that the right slow can keep writing?
What's that? Oh, you're, okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Mayor, you good?
Sure.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll make sure that y'all were able to have this presentation.
There won't, there won't be a test, I.
There's no test. So some tools for land use decisions. Um, you know, I think we've, we've been kind of talking about this and what's important. So these are some things that y'all have now, um, that the, the city of Oxford has, uh, comprehensive plans. Um, so your, again, your comprehensive plan is from two thousand nine, you know, that's, um, you know, that, that's a, that's a, it, it's time for an update, for sure. Um, and, you know, I think there's a lot that's changed since then. You also have your downtown master plan. I think that was done twenty seventeen, fifteen, something like that.
Fifteen.
Maybe, maybe earlier than that.
Fourteen.
Sixteen, sixteen, yeah. Um, you have pedestrian plan, talks about connectivity as far as your pedestrians, the sidewalk connections. Um, you have a bicycle plan, you have a regional transportation line. I don't think y'all have one for the city itself. But y'all, I think y'all have one as a region. Um, you have your CIP, your capital improvements plan, um, and y'all have recently done the comprehensive infrastructure improvements. So these are some things that y'all are doing now that are comprehensive planning tools, um, and, and kind of helps you make decisions. Again, the emphasis, comprehensive plan, uh, updating that would incorporate some of these recommendations that come into there. So you won't have all of these. It'll all be in one document, um, as you move forward. So I think that's an important point out. And again, back to what a comprehensive plan is, it is a policy document. It is not the law. Um, it's a law to have one, but it's not necessarily the law to have to follow the work order like an ordinance is. Um, so it's a policy document and it outlines the visions for the community. Um, and that can be way more than land use. It can be infrastructure, it can be sidewalks, it can be greenways, it can be, uh, parks and recreation. Um, all these things are, are, are part of it. It's not just about land use. Um, and it gives you a ten to twenty-year forecast, you know, and I mentioned y'all, the one y'all have is twenty, or it's two thousand and nine. So, you know, you're, you're past that, way, way, way past that. Um, again, heavy citizen involvement in this process. It will not be a successful plan if you do not have a lot of citizen involvement in it. It just will not be that way. Um, I promise you, no matter how much you have, you're still gonna have somebody that's gonna show up and say they never heard about it when the adoption happens. But, but you can't prevent that from happening. Um, but you can make all the efforts. And when you get to that point, the way I've handled that, particularly as a commissioner, um, is that I say, hey, we did this, 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 this. We had it posted here. We had this opportunity, you know, why, how did you not know about any of these? Um, so I think you gotta try to get it out there as much as you can. And the most important thing is that this is now, is the basis for all zoning decisions that are made. Um, so as a planning board, when you make a recommendation, you have to come up with a statement that says this recommendation is in, is supported by this comprehensive plan. And when the board, um, makes their approval or denial, they have to come up with a statement that says that as well. Um, and so, you know, it's a, it's called a consistency statement. And, and it has, it, it is part of the ordinance, part of the approval process. So it really is, um, almost urging and requiring you as a municipality to, you know, practice what you preach. You know, if you adopt this comprehensive plan, then you can make the, the, the right z- zoning decisions that support your comprehensive plan. Um, the other part of that is your development ordinances. And, you know, y'all have, um, typically your development ordinances, they implement your comprehensive plan. So they get to them, the comprehensive plans, the policy, the vision, the ordinances are the, the law and the implementation mechanism. Y'all have recently done a unified development ordinance. And I don't know, when did that get adopted?
July one.
Okay, so it's brand new and it's very branded. Um, so a UDO, uh, is very typical practice. Um, it, it helps bring, brings all your land use related ordinances into one document and that's great. I'm glad that y'all have moved in that direction. Um, and what this does, you know, this is a picture of your zoning map up here. Um, what, what it does is it regulates your setbacks, um, your, your standards, your design standards, landscaping, all those type of things. So that's your regulatory tool, um, that you have. So think, think two things. One, long-range comprehensive plan, current is your, is your UDO, and that's kind of how it goes. UDO, law, comprehensive plan, policy. So again, kind of talking about what a UDO does, and I'm sure y'all, since y'all just adopted it, y'all have probably seen others before. But a UDO really, it, 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 it should incorporate your comprehensive plan goals. Uh, it should reorganize things that maybe were in different ordinances before. Um, it tries to cut down on consist, on inconsistencies. Um, so you don't have one ordinance saying one thing and the other ordinance saying another, creating havoc for your staff and for your boards. Um, clear development processes, um, readability should be better and there should be inclusion of graphics and illustrations. So, so these are some things that go into your UDO and that's great that y'all have a, have a new one and I hope it's, hope it's working out good for you guys. Um, as far as some, some best practices, uh, things that, that we see and things that I've seen through the years that I think are, are, are good kind of rules to live by, um, is you wanna make sure that your processes are predictable and clear. You know, I think that works for your citizens, it works for you as a board, it works for your staff, like it works for the development community. Having those very, having a very clear path on how they get from point A to point B is very important. Um, you know, one of the things that I was taught early on is that, you know, when you're, when you're, um, working with someone, particularly at the staff level, um, your answer should either be yes or it should be no, but, you know, and that's something that I learned early on. And what I mean by that is that if it's a yes, then yes, it meets the code and, um, yes, you can proceed with this. If it's a no, you say no, but here are some alternatives for it. So I think that really helps and that works in a lot of different ways. Um, I think the worst thing you can do is just say no if you're done with it and walk out. I think it's good to explain things. Um, good standards, equal quality development and less board review. You know, and I, I, I'm not familiar with the UDO, um, I don't know, uh, what's in there. But, uh, a lot of times in the past, uh, there was a lot of communities that had to have board review on things that might have just need to have better standards, um, that could be administered by your staff. For example, one that we saw a lot, or used to see a lot of was a bank in a commercial district had to go get a special use permit only because it had to have the teller to the side and couldn't have it in front, right? So you're making a bank that's allowed in the district, have to go through this whole process just to get the approval to move the teller on the side. So how do you fix that? You change your standard to say, okay, banks are allowed and they just have a standard that they have to have the, um, you know, they have to have the teller to the side. So you cut down on all that, uh, process they have to go through. Um, but there's, that's just a general way to look at it. Um, you know, I don't know how much y'all struggle with special use permits, um, in the quasi judicial process, um, but I know we do, um, with our boards. Um, those can be, uh, difficult process to go through. I would urge you to try to cut down on those as much as you can. Um, and also the other thing is try to utilize conditional zoning. Um, I think that is, is something that is a process that does a couple of things. One, it helps you as a board, you as a staff, you as an elected body, to have an idea of what this request involves. So, uh, on a general rezoning request, let's say if someone has something's own agriculture and they wanna go to, to business. You don't technically have the ability to limit what can go in that. With conditional zoning, they can come in and say, hey, I wanna rezone this property to conditional, um, a business and all I wanna do here is to build a bank. That's all I wanna do. And you're allowed to restrict them to that thing. So I would really urge y'all, if you're not already utilizing it, to really think about utilizing that process going forward. Questions? Yes, sir.
How much does one of these plans cost?
Comprehensive plan, I, well, I, I think a lot of it depends on what your needs are. You know, a, a lot of them, uh, depends on, um, how much involvement, you know, you wanna have in it, um, what you wanna get out of it. You know, different communities want different things. Um, you know, so a, a lot of it depends on that. I think that, um, you know, I think having an idea of how much community engagement you wanna have, what you want to have in there, um, all kinds of let, will let firms kind of come up with a scope and a fee of what would be. Um, you know, honestly, a town of y'all's size, um, I, I'd, I'd have to look and see what some of the ones that we've done is, but um, it, 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 it ranges to what your needs are. Yes, sir.
You mentioned on passing the vision, does vision come first in the plan or the other way around?
Yeah, so, um, what happens typically in, in a, in a comprehensive planning process is uh, the, the very first part of it that any firm should do, um, is get to know the community, right? The last thing, we, we have a very strong way of doing business with communities. We are not the experts that are coming out of town and telling you what to do in your town. What our job is, is to learn about your, your city, to learn about the issues that are going on, um, and to find out from you, how can we help, you know, kind of identify what your problems are, what you wanna, how you wanna be, what you wanna get to. So, so the first part of it is really your research part of it, where you get to know the community. Um, and then the second part of it is that visioning process. Um, you know, it, it, it is the part where you're like, okay, what do you see in the future? You have survey results, you talk to stakeholders, um, you kind of gather information from your elected body and your advisory boards and your staff and you start putting all these kind of pieces together. And then from that, we have, so what we've done then is we, we've researched your community thoroughly. I mean, I mean, really, really researched the entire community. We have gotten feedback from all the people that should be involved as well as citizens. And we start putting together a vision statement. And, and that vision statement guides the rest of the plan. Um, it comes up with different recommendations, it comes up with strategies, all through. So that's typically how the process works. And then there's, you know, it's not just like there's one public meeting. There's, there's also, you know, there's, there's several along the way so that people are able to comment and see and see the process and make sure that, you know, as we as a consultant, um, or working with, uh, with the town or the city, we're going in the right direction. And, and so I would say, yeah, that's kind of the process. So the vision is really put together by what we hear and then by having that vision statement, you build off those recommendations and strategies.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Okay, normally in consulting projects, you have, you have a proposal, a call to action, going with three or four-phase process.
Correct.
So your call to action right now is to proceed with phase one, which would be what?
Okay, so typically, we have three, usually three phases until we get it through. It's usually the, the, the research.
Or four is execution.
Well, right, four is adoption and get, implementation, right?
Go ahead.
So, so typically the, the first part of it is, um, the, the sort of project initiation. And that's really kind of coming in and meeting the stakeholders and get to know the community, um, taking, we take tours of the community. So we, we, we really do come in and learn, you know.
That's what we are now.
Right. Well, 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 I don't know.
Or some open.
Right. And, and that's what y'all want to do. Yeah, that would be the, that would be the next stage, right? That would be the next step, um, is to really get to know the community.
So, uh, okay, I'm gonna pause you for one second because with this process, and I know I'm not part of the people who wanna be making decisions, but you have a checklist of what we propose is X, Y, Z, this research, that research, stakeholders, it's what, you know, what we look to find out. And then, and then come back from that phase one findings to come up with those mission statements, those visions, and then quantify that in, in proceeding forward. Is that correct?
Yep, that's the process. That's right, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, there's a lot that goes on, you know, in that, but that is, that is kind of how you kind of sum it up.
Okay, I was trying to just help you out, move it along.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, that, that is kind of the process that happens through. Um, I got seven thirty to go. I don't, I don't wanna keep everybody too long. I've, I've got, you know, more slides. Y'all tell me what y'all wanna do.
Hi, is there a willingness that among the folks up here to sit, stay? What do you s- are you thinking ten or fifteen minutes? Are you thinking, what, not that much, more?
Probably more, yeah. Probably, probably, probably more. I'm a talker. Um, and I think this is a good dialogue, I think, for, for y'all to have. Um, I'm happy to, I think Al and I talked about, you know, we didn't know that one would be enough, so we, we talked about potentially having another one, you know, maybe another couple of weeks or something like that to kind of finish up where, where we're at.
Is there a willingness to keep going?
Do we get pizza?
I know a lot of y'all were out late last night, so.
As long as you're buying, absolutely, we're good.
Well, seeing some nods, I'm seeing, a little while. I mean, planning board members, are you interested in continuing to stay on?
No, y'all can bring him back, is that optional?
I think it is indeed, so, but I also am under the impression that probably there's a lot more that we can cover when he comes back. So we could, we could let him get to the end of today? Or is there a desire to abort today and start with this and then keep going?
Are you only asking your commissioners or are you asking your planning board also?
Well, that's what I was, I was checking with my folks and then planning board folks, yes.
Ma'am, I may be a little bit confused. Is this the start of a consultancy contract the city has made?
Not yet, it's not, no. The only thing, the only thing that we have engaged with Stuart Design is to come to this meeting tonight and potentially one more. And based upon the conversations that we have and the desires of the two boards as to where to take this and where we need to go, then we'll take it from there. If that is the result of development of an RFP for a comprehensive or a master land use development plan or whatever, it will go to that. But right now, it is the conversation that we're having because we haven't had those conversations.
No.
No, sir.
No, this was, this, we did this because there are so many requests coming in to develop land and that are going to be going through the planning board and our board. We thought this is a whole new area for us and we need to start getting more information sooner rather than later. So this was really, it was just this thought that we need to create a situation where we can enable those of us that are in the process of approving plans to have more information than we have had to deal with in the past, which is, you know, decisions have often been, we're going to cut off two acres for my two children to build a house. You know, it's been a different level of decision-making. There was no interview process, it was just, we need to start learning more. And you, yes, Mr. Kinlaw, you had a comment?
No, no, I'm with you all the way. No, but first, no, I have one question. How many more slides you got to go through, Chad?
Yeah, I thought we were going to eight o'clock.
Oh, forget it, we can keep going, yep.
People are leaving, so.
Thank you, ma'am, for what you've done. I hope he comes back, but I cannot stay. A lot of us have had busy days today and it's been a long day.
All right, we'll come back.
So I really hope you bring him back because I would hate to miss him, but I'm tired and it's hard to hear somebody when they're tired. You ever talked before? You can't teach a sleeper child.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
They won't learn.
So maybe what we can do, how about this?
Can you bring him back next week?
Right, Chad is going to send us the slides. What if we can, we continue? Anybody who wants to leave, leave, no offense taken. And it seems clear there is a desire to continue this conversation. Would it be reasonable that at the start of the next one, we have a brief recap? The slides have gone out to anybody that's missed anything and we are, we are streaming, correct?
We are.
We are streaming, so there's the ability to pick up on that and that way we can get through to this point and then we'll keep going. Is that reasonable? Yes, ma'am.
And he's muddling in my ear. And I wonder what he got to say, but you're on point with me. And so I would like to hear more about it.
Chad, how about we hang for eight o'clock? Eight o'clock cutoff time, man, pretty hard and firm.
Chad, I have a question, and this is a specific question. I came on the board the year the gentleman left. They had approved Oxford Park and Lexington Park. Since then, we have not had a subdivision until a couple of years ago, we had Hatches Creek. They came in with the drawing, they had retail here, they had single-family homes here. Then we had another one, Aldi Meadows. Same thing, they had to draw in the houses. Or we got another one out on ninety-six, so.
The Meadows.
They showed the roads. And then we've got one coming before us next week. They want to rezone for GR-ten, which is ten units per acre. I think that's right. But we have nothing to look at, no drawing, nothing. Would you request something to look at before you approve that for Wake Forest?
So I will tell you, if you go back, I mentioned conditional zoning. I don't know that we have done, I don't remember the last general rezoning request we've done at Wake Forest. And that's what they're asking for. They're asking to go from, I guess, whatever the base, residential.
Predominantly RA because they're, they're looking at these larger parcels.
So they're going from one unit to ten, right? So that is a general use request. You don't really have the ability to ask those questions. You can ask them and he can tell, they can tell you, but you can't hold them to those things, right? And so the best, the judgment that you can make is that, okay, we understand that this is going to the, to an R-ten, what was it?
G-ten.
Then you, G-ten. You know that it's probably going to end up being some type of residential subdivision, ten units an acre. With the conditional zoning process, that allows you to say, okay, we're going from this rural residential, but we're going to this conditional G-ten. And the condition is that it's going to be a single-family subdivision, this is the plan, this is the road network. Maybe they need to provide a buffer against, you know, a neighbor or something like that. You're able to provide those things, ask questions about it and all those type of things. That's why I mentioned that I think it's really important to try and encourage that conditional zoning process because otherwise, you have to make your decision on any use that could go in there under that R-ten, G-ten district. You have to make your decision based on that.
And that's next week, so we got to decide on it. We can't have conditional zoning.
They've asked for a delay.
Thankfully.
Till when?
Till December, at this point.
So to follow up on that, this is also satellite. So that was part of my question for you when you made the comment, you know, you're running miles of line to get out to them and we've got this rural farmland in between and we, several people made the comment, you know, we don't want to lose that rural sense of who we are. So does that also, that factors into it as well? Whether we would be interested in a ten, GR-ten is the max that is allowed by the new UDO. Do we want to hop over a bunch of open space and do that or encourage GR-ten? Of course, UDO is what it is, closer to the corporate city limits and kind of let it drift away and, you know, decrease in density as it gets further out.
Yeah, well, yeah, and I don't know, I think the other thing, and I don't know where the property is, but, you know, and I don't know what's your future land use map, y'all do have a future land use map. So, you know, you may want to look at that and say, okay, what do we have? Do we, this is low, this is residential? And if you do, then you have every right, the ability to say no. You know, and I think it goes, you know, kind of, you remember we talked about this transit, right? And I think, you know, this kind of goes into future land use maps and comprehensive planning is that, you know, you want to focus that this higher density development, where the infrastructure is and closer to where people can walk to communities and, you know, not have to drive so far because then you're going to sprawl, right? I mean, y'all know it's sprawls. And so I think you get out of whack when maybe you take this and you move it over here, right? And similarly, that might be something that y'all are kind of dealing with now. But I think that's why I really encourage communities to really try to utilize that conditional zoning process. Really because it does two things. It lets the applicant share what they might want to do. It lets the boards be able to ask questions and have some clarity, analysts or citizens know what's going on. You know, if it's just a G-ten, then, you know, you just got to think about it. It could technically be anything in that, in that, at the highest density. So, you know, I think that's certainly something that you, you know, need to think about and, you know, as y'all do go and move forward into, you know, comprehensive plan update, you know, really paying attention to that future land use map and where that development wants to go, where you want, you don't want development to go. And where you want to have maybe lower density development to maintain that sort of, you know, more rural feel on the outskirts of town. And then when you get closer to town, you know, it's okay to maybe have a little more density, right? So again, yeah, that's the thing, but back to your question, you can ask questions about it and they can tell you, but there's no binding agreement that can make that happen. Because then you get into contract zoning and that's illegal and, you know, all kinds of stuff, so. Does that answer your question? Sort of.
Maybe we can have another meeting before the December meeting.
Yeah, it's the best I can do for you. Any other questions before we move on?
Um, yeah, I'm also on the cog board and in one of our meetings, they were talking about a rail line coming up through this area.
This line.
Huh?
This line.
Oh, okay. So in our decision-making, should we take into consideration that rail line?
Yeah, I mean, I think you can. A lot of times, the way the statutes are worded is that it's any adopted comprehensive plan is kind of the way it is. You know, that's a little loose, but I think if it's part of an adopted plan, whether it's a state plan or a federal plan, then I think you certainly can consider that, for sure. But I think that also, and I hate to keep dragging y'all back to a comprehensive plan update, but I think every conversation we have kind of goes back to that, is that that is something that would be looked at. And maybe there's an opportunity, you know, where it's going to think about, maybe there's like a transit or even development that could happen near that, you know. I mean, I don't even, I don't know if there's a, you know, there's a train stop or something like that. I mean, all those things, you know, are things to consider and to think about from a long range perspective. We all know it's not going to happen overnight, right? I mean, we all know that, I mean, gee gosh, they've been talking about, you know, Capitol Boulevard being a freeway since, you know, twenty-some years ago and we still haven't seen it yet. So, but at the same time, it is important to plan for and make sure because, you know, who knows a hundred years from now? I mean, that could be a very, you know, live system and, you know, the world's a different place. And so I think that, yes, I think it is important to look at state and regional plans such as that when you're making decisions. Okay?
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, so one of the things that I think is really important is being on an advisory board or being on an elected board, is being prepared for your meetings. You know, I think one thing that's really, really important is to always have training. Utilize your staff, utilize the UNC School of Government, utilize any tools that are out there. Get people like me to come talk to you, you know. You know, it's always good to kind of keep yourself abreast of current laws and to stay on track on things. So continually train yourself. Whenever something comes out, make sure you visit the site. Don't rely on aerial footage or aerial photos or GIS or maybe a letter you got or your staff report. Go out and visit the site. I think that's incredibly important. You can see the neighborhood, you can see what's around it, you can see the situation. Boots on the ground are incredibly important. Read your staff reports. You know, y'all have professional staff, I'm sure they've prepared information for you. They do put time into that, so, you know, they are the staff experts on the ordinances. So read your staff reports. What we're seeing you do, I know we used to have that old saying, you show up to the meeting and everybody hear the rip off the envelope, right? Because nobody's read anything prior to the meeting. You know, have knowledge of your plans and your ordinances. You know, take a little bit of time to look through them, be familiar with them. You don't have to be an expert on them, but, you know, when someone brings up something, do a little homework. Go through your ordinances and your plans and make sure that, you know, it makes sense to you. Understand the process. So I think that it's real important to make sure that you understand the difference between a legislative and a quasi judicial process. So legislative process is a hearing that anybody can speak at, anybody can talk to, anybody can come and participate, you can ask questions when you're out on the street, talk to the people, you can talk to the property owner. You can do all kinds of stuff like that. It's a very, kind of a loose process. Quasi judicial is the complete opposite. That's a very rigorous process that you cannot have what's called ex parte communication. You cannot have any, it's almost like a court setting where only the evidence that's presented at the hearing, at that public hearing can be considered. And we'll get into that a little bit more in detail, but just make sure you know the process, make sure you know the difference between those. And then ask yourself, ask your questions of your staff, you know. If you've read the staff report, something doesn't make sense, give them a call. You know, they're a good resource to, to all of us that are on the boards. So just, as you're preparing for things, those are things that I think are really important. And then as far as leading management tasks, you know, make sure you follow your rules and procedure. If you don't have one, you should have one. Kind of follow how that goes through meetings. Make sure your codes and ordinance are accessible. Make sure you have it where you can reference something if it pops up. We've gone to the iPads in Wake Forest, and I'll tell you, that's, I didn't like it at first, but now it's really convenient to pull stuff up on, stuff like that, so that's really nice. Be punctual and be structured. You know, the old saying, clear is kind, is very important, I think, when you're running a meeting or being part of it. Make sure you start on time, make sure you have a good process that you go through and that you're very fair. Have an open mind and be unbiased. I think that is really, really important, particularly in legislative rezonings, you know. You might have a neighbor that's upset or you addressed somebody and they got in your ear and, oh, this is terrible. What do you guys think? This is awful. That's been a struggle for me because I know a lot of people in Wake Forest. And I have a lot of people that reach out to me and talk to me and try to influence me. And I think it's really important to try to have that open mind, regardless of the project. Try to go into that meeting with the mindset that you are neutral. And what you hear and the background that you get at that meeting is going to help you make that decision. I think that's really, really important. Be fair and ethical. People watch you in the community, you know, they see how you act. And when you're, when you're sitting in this seat, it's real easy for people to take jabs at you, you know, really, really easy. You know, people sit behind social media, sit behind emails, they'll take jabs at you. But I think when you, when you're ethical and when you really hold yourself to a high standard and you're fair to everybody, it will help you fend off some of those attacks. See the big picture. Sometimes it's so easy to get focused on a little issue that's part of the approval process. I've seen meetings go for hours where the planning board got just locked down on a stormwater pump, right? They had lost, lost the big picture picture of how this really neat development was happening and the area was okay with it, but they got locked in on a stormwater pump. And, you know, that's one of those things that probably needs to be handled by your staff. Don't lose, don't get so tied up in the little things that you lose the big picture. Be clear in your communications and your actions. You have, I'm sure you have a great city clerk that keeps great records. Make sure you do that, those things are very, very important. When you make a recommendation or you make a motion to approve or deny, be very clear about what you're doing, what you're saying. One of the things that I always try to do as a commissioner, and when I was a planning board member, is when I make a vote, I always give a reason why. Yes or no, I would say yes, you know, it doesn't belong. I think it's really important to be transparent to the developer, to the public and, you know, to the citizens that you give a reason, you know, why you're making your decision. And that's something I always make a habit of doing. And most importantly, avoid conflicts of interest, you know, just avoid that if you can. If you've got somebody that you know is an applicant in an upcoming project and, you know, he's a buddy or she's a friend or whatever, you know, if they want to try to get you in a public setting. or she's a bu, a friend or, or whatever, um, you know, if they want, how to try to get you in a public setting, you're at, at eat at a restaurant or something like that, be kind, but say, listen, this, you know, we've got this hearing going on. I don't, I just don't want anybody to think that, you know, there's an inside deal going on. Um, so, so that goes back to being ethical and to really just try to avoid those conflicts of interest. I think when you avoid them, um, you know, most people understand, I've had to do that before. Um, it's, I've had, one of my best friends has opened a business in Wake Forest, and I, and I had to have a conversation with him. I said, I can't, can't talk to you about this, you know, I, 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 it's just not appropriate, you know? So I think those are things that are really good when you're, you're managing a meeting. So let's talk just a few minutes about a conflict of interest and what that means. The one thing about some of the recent legislation is that it made it very clear as to what exactly, um, classifies as a conflict of interest. So obviously, a financial conflict is one, right? If you're, if you stand to make some money off of a, of a project, then you really need to refuse yourself of that project. I think that's pretty easy to understand, if you're gonna have some type of financial impact on a project. It's best that you say that and you give refuse from the board. Relationship co, uh, conflict. Now, this is, is interesting, because this has changed to a, a close family business or associated relationship and, with certain interested individuals. That can be a little bit tricky, you know, particularly in a small town. But you really gotta try to avoid that. So, you know, if you have a cousin, uh, you know, maybe you're not really close with, but they share your last name, and they're an applicant, probably good to, to, you know, refuse yourself, just from the appearance of it being a conflict of interest. You know, with, with, uh, quasi judicial decisions, um, it's a little bit different, because, uh, you also can't have an unbiased, you have to have an unbiased, um, opinion, uh, when you come into it. So with a rezoning, you can have, you can have communication outside of the public meeting, you can, you know, you can, um, talk about it however you want. But in a, in a quasi judicial setting, it's like a special news program. That actually, uh, you can, i- if, if you happen, we had one of these recently where there was a quasi judicial decision, and one of our members was not aware that it was a quasi judicial decision. So remember going back, know what the process is. They had been contacted by a neighbor, and they went to visit the neighbor, and they talked about the project, how horrible it was gonna be on their property. Well, that's, those are, those are not good, right? And, and what they had to do, he, he felt very guilty about it and didn't realize that it was a quasi judicial process, and had to, you know, say that, listen, I had this conversation, um, you know, it, it, it did kinda sway my opinion on that. And he had to refuse himself from it. So, you know, that's really, really important to, to do those things, um, you know, when it's there. So just keep that in mind, you know, go, going forward as y'all can see, continue to see things, um, and how you act, you know, as a board member. This is something I put together, uh, that I think's really important. This is ten commandments of an effective board member. So number one, be, be prepared and, and show up for the meetings. And the worst thing you can do is, um, not be prepared, ask questions that you probably already should know, and show up, you know, every three months or something like that. Make sure you're there. Number two, actively listen, you know, whether it's your staff talking, whether it's another board member talking, whether it's the public talking. Don't be on your phone, you know, don't be leaning back, rolling your eyes. Be an active listener, um, even though you might wanna do those things.
What'd I say?
Uh, maintain courtesy, be kind, um, you know, you know, be kind, even, you know, sometimes meetings can get a little heated. Um, and I think sometimes it's, it's, it's good to, to, to not get worked up sometimes, like some of your citizens or developers might in the, in the crowd. Be, carefully choose your words, you know, sometimes, uh, you know, when, when something might be heard, you know, sometimes you may wanna jump to the defense of something, or it might be completely wrong, you know, about what, uh, uh, someone might be saying about you. So just be very careful about your words. Remember it's being recorded, um, you know, and, and kinda how you reflect on yourself. Avoid the conflicts of interest, we talked about that. Um, avoid the appearance of, 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 so make sure you don't even have that appearance. Try to stay away from things. Avoid, this is my favorite, avoid backroom parking lot deals. Make sure, you know, you're not, you know, you're not seen with a, a, a big developer that's coming in, and, you know, y'all are in a, in a restaurant, buying drinks with each other, shaking hands, having a good time, you know? Even though you might be your friend, that is, uh, that is not something that you wanna, wanna be involved with. Never commit your vote. I can't tell you how important that is, be, and I tell you that because a lot can happen for the time you might meet with somebody and talk with them between the time the public meeting happens and the time you vote on. Try not to ever make your vote. Hold on to that until you hear all the evidence, uh, even if your mind might already be made up. Do not give away your vote until it actually happens. Govern the programs, don't manage them. Now, let your staff do their job. Think big picture. Make actions on the big picture things. Don't get tied up on, uh, you know, the height of a fence or the depth of a stone wall or a pump. You know, let your staff handle those things. And remember, you're a steward, not an owner, right? Remember that of this town, like, we're, we're stewards. We don't own the town, we're stewards up. And, and keep that in mind, so. These are some things that I think that, you know, if you utilize these things, you're gonna be a good board member. You can continue to be a good board member. You're not gonna put yourself in an opposition, um, you're gonna make good decisions and, and it reflects on your meeting. So, I've got about three minutes. I do have more slides. I think it's probably good to pause, because we said we would go until eight. I am happy to come back. I don't know when we can do that. I'll let y'all coordinate that and I'll give, um, Allison Dixwell. What might also be helpful, um, if between now and then, y'all have some things you want me to talk about, some specific things? Um, I'm happy to look and, and kinda give some feedback on those too. I do have a few more things I do wanna go through, um, but I can save that for another time. So, um, again, uh, it's almost eight. Are there any kind of closing questions or, or thoughts or anything like that?
This is not for now, but I'm gonna go ahead and put it on the table for the next time that I would dearly, we, we have, you have made a great point about the importance in order for us to be prepared to assess things, to update our comprehensive plan. That said, that's gonna take time, and in the meantime, we're having all these requests that are coming in. I would love s- some, s- as clear guidance as you are able to give us, recognizing that Oxford is different from Wake Forest or any other town. These are some things you need to make sure that you are looking for. These are the kinds of things, I mean, we, you know, whether it's traffic impact analyses, I've had people calling me saying, you can't ask for that, you know, all, but, you know. What are the things we really need to make sure that we have information about as we're going forward in decisions? And what are the missteps that we need to try to avoid? That, you know, you brought up some, um, yeah, with respect to Wake Forest, but I think that, from my perspective, would be hugely helpful.
And I've got some scenarios that I can share with, kinda take you through, like, some of those things that exactly cover, exactly what you're saying.
Thank you.
Sure. Good.
Hi, Michael.
Yes, yes.
I think what would be helpful to this community that has these, that appears to have some real interest in growth is also what experience there is with pressures that are coming for development outside our E T J. And we don't have any plan there. We don't have any zoning there yet. folks are wanting to do things and we haven't had any expansion from the county to our E T J. So, those are really important things that we haven't even thought about officially. So, and I think that's part of the, maybe hot scratch, and they can make it, so, it might be helpful.
I was gonna say, one more thing, Ed, as Sarah said, and I think it, uh, kinda piggybacks from what I stated earlier. When you're looking at trying to manage strategic growth, from my experience, which you kinda understand, are the key strategic drivers of that growth. And so, I'm interested in understanding those, uh, constant causal statistics and correlations, which comprise those key drivers, such that we can make an intelligent decision as to what.
No, we, uh, got a lot more to talk about. Uh, there's a lot in front of us. I want to personally thank not only Mr. Sari, but everyone for coming tonight. I mean, this is a, it's a big topic and one that, uh, this board has been, uh, having conversation about for the last couple of years. And, um, what has really brought it to the forefront is, is this. I mean, uh, up, up until a few months ago, we had development on the horizon. Uh, over the last, what Cheryl, six months or so, we've had eighteen, whatever the number is, um, developments potentially being proposed for the city of Oxford, which has kicked this into high gear. And, you know, the mayor is exactly right. We're very, um, this is North Carolina, and we see what has gone on around Raleigh, and, you know, some of it's great. Wake Forest is fantastic. I remember going through Wake Forest when it was three thousand people, you know? And, uh, now it's fifty thousand, and it has just exploded, as have other communities. Wendell is going through it right now. I think Wendell may be the number one fastest growing community on there, on the top ten list that you had. You cannot outgrow or grow faster than your ability to accommodate growth. And our issue, you know, is public services, you know, water, sewer, city facilities. All those things cost money, and typically what happens is the development comes at a pace that doesn't seem to pay for the need to install those services. So, you know, it is a, a real balancing act that has to take place, and for the city, it is, you know, at what point in time do you put the brakes on a little bit? When do you slow down? I'll use Apex as a prime example of that. Last night in their election, you know, that's what the candidates were concerned about, and that's what they were running on, is, you know, controlling growth, and that's been going on in that community, which has been a huge point of contention down there for the last ten to twelve years. It has changed the nature of their board, uh, because they had explosive growth. I'm sure everybody understands that, and has seen what has gone on down there, and they have tried to slow it down intentionally by utilizing their ordinances, their comprehensive plans, because they were getting to a point that, um, you know, it's outpacing their ability to provide the services. You're in the planning business and you know that, uh, you know, residential growth doesn't necessarily pay the bills. You know, you, you're looking for those larger, uh, developments of commercial and, uh, industrial to help you tremendously pay the bills. Uh, residential can oftentimes be a burden. So, when you're looking at it from the standpoint of a community that for the last fifty years was pleased and happy to have a sniff from a Dollar General store to someone coming in and dropping a plan on your desk for one thousand three hundred and thirty-five homes, and I have fourteen other developments, you know, looking to do similar developments, it's frightening. And, you know, so all of this is an exercise in getting ducks in a row to the best of our ability as quickly as we can. So, I'm very, very pleased to see the concern that this board has, that the planning board has. And to get back to that question of why are we here, we're here to gain a consensus. That's what we're here to do tonight, to make sure that the planning board has the same feelings as the Board of Commissioners does in how do we guide this growth? And that's the term that I'm gonna use. I'm not gonna call it managing it or anything else. It's how do you guide it? Because, you know, growth that's guided can be good, and that's what we're here to do. But if, you know, we, um, are playing catch-up to that growth and chasing our tail, then we're gonna be in the same position as some of these other communities that, um, wish they would've done a little bit more ahead of time. But you and I will talk more, and we'll seek to schedule a follow-up on this. And please, uh, if you have questions, you can send them to me. Uh, my email address is on the website. Send it to me, send it to Cheryl. Uh, we'll, we'll get that information back to Mr. Sari, uh, regarding your question, to help prepare for the next meeting. So, we'll get this information out as soon as you send it to me, the slideshow, we'll get that out as well.
I'll have that out to you tomorrow, Cheryl, y'all can have it.
Wonderful.
Thank y'all for your time. I really appreciate it.
Yep, are we, I think we're, I wanna reiterate, thank you all for coming and staying the length of time you have and for, yes, for coming and listening. Wonderful. And at this time, I think everybody is ready for a motion.
No, she should, Cheryl.
Motion for Commissioner Curran. God bless you each and everyone. Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Sari. This has been awesome.